Okay, it's 6:30, so I'll call the meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Kratzky. I am present. Groko.
Present.
Hufal is absent tonight. Padilla is also absent tonight. Rose.
Present.
And Eager.
Here.
We have a couple changes to the agenda. We are going to remove 6 DI from the agenda. That's the special event permit. That event is being canceled. So we can cross that off. That's under the consent agenda. And then we're adding, under the library, an appointment to the library board. That will be 9 GI. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, then I will take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved with the changes.
Motion by Eager, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rose. Any other questions, changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here that would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to council members. Any updates from council members? And city staff, any updates? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I'll take a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with the change noted at the beginning of the meeting. We have a motion from Eager. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any questions or discussion about tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. We don't have any public hearings, so moving on to communication requests and petitions. There's a few things for people's information. Ornament decorating at the library, free CPR training at the library, a food author. James Norton is coming to the library, a Veterans Day program, breakfast and coffee happening at Emmanuel Lutheran School, Celtic Christmas at Wakefield Pork, and the senior center newsletter. Under department committee reports and action items, we'll jump to the library, 9 GI. Oops, sorry, skip Ty. Public Works. Is Ty here? Okay. No updates from Ty. So then, under 9 G, the library, we have... Deb Dice has willing to serve on the library board. We've had an opening since Amy Bell took the position at the library. So for tonight, we're looking for a motion to appoint Deb Dice to the library board effective November 10th.
So moved.
We have a motion from Eager. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rose. Any discussion? I'll just say thank you for Deb, for volunteering. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have city engineer, Resolution 2025-24 regarding the feasibility report and calling for a hearing on improvement.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Just by way of introduction for those watching at home, my name is Justin Black and I serve as a city engineer. In the council packet this evening is a feasibility report for the CASA 21 Improvement Project. And I have some slides that I want to share tonight that just provide an overview of the report and then be happy to open it up for any questions. So I'm going to jump right into the slides here and we'll go through them. We can go back at any point in time or save questions to the end either is fine. What I'd like to present this evening is just a background of the project, what the project's scope is, existing conditions, the proposed improvements. And then we'll get into some of the costs and funding for the project, the proposed estimated assessments, the project schedule, and then, like I said, plenty of time for questions. As far as next steps, the mayor had already mentioned there's a resolution in the packet tonight. It's part of the public improvement process. It's one of the steps in the process. And that resolution receives the feasibility report and then calls for a public hearing. And we're proposing to set that public hearing date for the December 3rd council meeting. So just some background on the project itself. This is a cooperative agreement project between City of Gaylord and Sibley County. And it's a project that many of you are familiar with. This concept has been talked about for at least the last 10 years, the realignment of County Road 21. And even during the time it was discussed as a concept, there was a study that was initiated by MinDOT, Sibley County, and Gaylord. It was a corridor study and that was done about five years ago. And out of the study came a recommendation as this is a project that should move forward, the realignment of County Road 21. And along with that, we've had some discussion about what the next project might look like. And MinDOT is actively looking at realignment of State Highway 19 to match that same intersection. So this is kind of step one or project one of that corridor study. As far as the project's scope goes, I've got a map up on the screen here. North is to the right and the shaded areas are the proposed road improvements. We'll talk a little bit more about those. The CASA 21, County Stated Highway 21 will curve to the south and follow the alignment of what used to be 13th Street. That now is part of the county stated highway system even though it is a gravel road. And then there'll be a realignment of County Road 10 that tees into CASA 21. There's also some utility improvements on Niklet Avenue that we'll talk a little bit more about as we get through these slides. So drainage improvements, extension of sewer and water, and then realignment of the roadways. And then, last but not least, this graphic shows the stormwater pond, which is that blue shape in the right-hand side of the image. That stormwater pond would meet the requirements for both MPCA and the city for stormwater management coming off the site. As far as existing conditions, I'm sure many of you have been out there. The roadway going to the north, County Road, it's a paved road, but it is what we call a rural section. It doesn't have curb and gutter. It has ditches on both sides. And then, like I mentioned, the portion going south, which is formerly 13th Street, is just a gravel road. Again, no curb and gutter, rural section. County Road 10, paved county road, again, no curb and gutter. And then Niklet Avenue is a gravel street that exists out there in the project area. So when we're talking about just the roadways themselves, just the streets, the improvements mainly focus around County Stated Highway 21 and that realignment to State Highway 5. What we're proposing is a paved surface. There'll be curb and gutter on the west side so that we can capture drainage on the west side, get it into a pipe and across underneath the road. But on the east side of the roadway, we're proposing to leave it a rural section with no curb and gutter. That'll give the city and county some flexibility in the future as development occurs on the east side, that curb and gutter, if needed, can be installed at a later date. And then, like I mentioned, there are drainage improvements. We're adding some new culverts, some catch basins, some storm sewer piping, and some drain tile. CASA 10 is more straightforward. It's just realigning into the new 21. It'll tee into that roadway. It's a paved surface. Again, not proposing curb and gutter on that. It'll look much like it does today. Maybe a little bit of a caveat with County Road 10 is there is the trail that follows along that section of roadway. And we'll realign that trail to parallel the new county road and tee into CASA 21. So we'll follow that same alignment. When we get into the utilities, the underground piping systems, we're going to extend those utilities on Niklet Avenue. There's both water and sewer. And we'll extend those about 800 feet, which will put us just on the east side of County Road 21. So this will allow for future expansion further east of Gaylord, extending those utilities along that Niklet Avenue corridor. As we extend those trunk lines, the service lines that are out there for the existing properties will reconnect into those. As far as Niklet Avenue itself, it will be impacted by the utility construction. Those trunk utilities are directly below Niklet. So we need to dig up the street to install those pipes. But we're not proposing any improvements for Niklet. We're just going to return it back to a gravel road, just as it is now. We know there's some drain tile out there. We'll replace that or repair it as needed. But we're not adding pavement or curb and gutter, putting it back just the way it is. There is a water main on the north side of County Road 10. And when we realign that county road, we want to bring that water main to the south side so that in the future, when that parcel develops on the south side of County Road 10, they have access to water. There's already sewer there, but the water has not been extended south. So that'll be an opportunity for us to make that addition. Here's just a graphic of what that Niklet Avenue utility extension looks like. The green line is the sanitary sewer and the blue is the water main. You can see that the existing utilities do extend on Niklet Avenue for about a block east of Melrose, but then that's where they stopped. And we would propose to connect on there and extend them the rest of the way about, like I said, 800 feet to take them to the other side of CASA 21. Drainage improvements, I've talked a little bit about these already. We'll add some new drains and some piping systems, some culverts, drain tile. And then probably the most notable is the stormwater pond. It's designed to meet both the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the City of Gaylord requirements. Because we're realigning the roadway, we're adding more pavement, more hard surface. We need to construct a pond for both water quality and for rate control. So that's the intent of the pond itself. So the pond will accommodate the realigned area of the new County Road 21. But because of where the pond is located, it also will provide a regional benefit and it'll be able to serve 10 acres of future development on the east side of County Road 21. So if you can envision a swath of land right next to County Road 21 on the east side, just south of Stormwater Pond, the pond will be able to accommodate that in the future if that develops into commercial or some other type of growth. So there's a regional benefit to that pond. The pond will not be able to serve any of the properties on the west side. We took a look at that and the pipes just got too large. It just wasn't feasible to get the drainage from the west side over and across. So any development on the west side of 21 will still require a separate stormwater pond in the future. The right-of-way for the roadway and the pond has been acquired already. Sibley County moved forward with that process a couple years ago. And everything shown in orange up on the screen has been acquired by Sibley County. So it accounts both for the right-of-way for the realignment of the road, but also you can see the large orange parcel off to the right hand of the screen. That's where the stormwater pond will be situated. So the property's already been acquired. It was just over eight and a half acres. And like I said, it's both for the roadway and the pond. So that step is complete. We're going to jump into the cost for the project. The City of Gaylord's share, again, this is a cooperative agreement project between city and county, almost 1.1 million. And Sibley County's share, 3.2 million. Sibley County's share is mostly roadway and then some storm sewer costs. You can see the total cost here, 4.3 million dollars. For the city, the project cost breakout is as follows. About 400,000 for street. That's namely Niklet Avenue, just restoring that street surface. Water main extension, the sanitary sewer extension, and then the city's share of the storm sewer. So the storm sewer gets split between city and county. This is assuming a 20-80 split, 20 city, 80 county. 20% city, 80% county. So that's how we arrive at the 1.1 million. You can kind of see the breakout of the different individual costs from a city perspective between street, water, sanitary, and storm to get us to that 1.1 million dollars. From a funding standpoint, we are applying the city's assessment policy. And I'll dive into that here in just a minute in the next couple of slides. But the total assessments that we're applying to the parcels in that area, just over a half a million dollars. The other funding sources, general tax levy, sewer, water, and storm sewer utilities makes up the balance to get us back to that 1,092,000 for total funding. So special assessments. So we are applying the city's special assessment policy to the project and it'll apply to the CASA 21 improvements. Even though this is a county road and the county is paying for the roadway, there's still a benefit for the properties adjacent to that roadway for the improvements. And in that light, we are assessing for those roadway improvements. Niklet Avenue will not be improved. Like I mentioned, we're just restoring it back to the gravel section. So we're not assessing for any street improvements on Niklet. We would be assessing for sewer and water on Niklet, but no street improvements. And like I mentioned, sanitary sewer, water main will be assessed per the policy. And then also, the property on the east side of CASA 21, they'll benefit from that regional stormwater pond. There's an assessment calculation for that. So the assessments for this project were based on the area of the parcels, which is allowed in the city's policy. We met with the city administrator to talk about the best and fairest way to assess for the improvements because we're talking about very large parcels. And the area method was what we are moving forward with. The only exception to that is the sewer and water services. They'll be assessed on a per each basis. Any assessments outside of the city limits, namely the properties east of CASA 21, those assessments will be deferred. So they'll be just held on to by the city until that property comes into the city and is annexed. Then those assessments would be applied to the property. In the report, we do have the estimated rates. We have a draft assessment rule. And there's also an assessment map in there. I'm not going to go through these line by line. This is in the report. But you can see all of the parcels are listed on the left-hand side. And then the right-hand side is the total estimated assessment amount for each parcel. The map that's in the report, you can actually see that where the parcels are situated and the dollar amounts are right on the map. So it's kind of a handy way to view what the proposed assessments are for the project. Just wrapping things up here with the schedule, I'm going to start in the schedule with the... We've been working on the project for a while and for tonight's purposes, I'm starting with a public hearing, which will be the December 3rd. We've got a staff plan review meeting scheduled on December 11th. We just had one last month with city and county staff, a plan review meeting. We're proposing to submit the plans to state aid in the middle of December, December 18th. So this is a state aid project. It has state aid funding. So there has to be a state aid review of the project itself. We're proposing to bring those final construction plans back to the city in early February for the city to approve. And bid opening date of March 5th is what we're targeting. Construction, I don't have an exact timeline other than to say it'll be next summer. Like I mentioned, the next step in the process would be to consider the resolution that's in the packet. That would receive this report and then call for that public hearing. As part of the public hearing, we'd publish notice in the newspaper, but we'd also send notices to all of the affected property owners adjacent to the project, welcoming them to come to the hearing and hear a very similar presentation to tonight along with providing estimates of what the assessments would be. With that, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions. I know for most of the council members, they've seen this project before. But be happy to go into greater detail or go back to any of the slides.
Have any questions, comments?
If there's no questions on the report itself, city administrator Steve Helgett did contact me last week Thursday with maybe a variable of the project. And the discussion that he presented was to have a consideration of not extending the city utilities, the water main and sanitary sewer, and delete that from the project. There's a cost savings to that. One thing that I would maybe suggest, if that's the direction the city would like to go, is to at least take a look at options for installing some, what we call casing pipes underneath the county road so that in the future, we could slide the water and sewer underneath the road. Even if it's 10 years from now, that's still a new county roadway. We wouldn't want to go back and have to dig through that road. It's brand new in order to accommodate a utility extension for maybe some new growth on the edge of the city. I guess with that, Steve, I'll maybe turn it over to you if I kind of summarize that.
Sure, thank you, Justin. In the packet, on the request for council action, I did kind of mention here a little bit as far as... First of all, if we're just leaving everything in the product as Justin had reviewed here, so leaving in the utilities, you know, as far as how we may finance that, I would suggest that we would consider looking at our water and sewer funds predominantly as far as maybe paying for, taking that out of our reserves, our funds, our current existing funds to finance or pay for those costs of the product versus bonding for those. We do have healthy enough funds that we could do that. We could also probably utilize those two funds to pay for the storm sewer improvements as well. Our storm sewer fund is healthy. It's probably, it's hanging in there more or less, but it's not to the degree that our water and sewer funds are. So if we were to keep everything in the product, as Justin outlined, that would be my recommendation, the council's, to consider utilizing those two funds. Basically to spend down the costs of bonding, spend down the project cost before we bond, that is. Keeping in mind, you know, part of our bond, as we've talked about, is to do the Public Works Garage next year. And that would be included in that bond issue then too. The other thing that I just put in here, as Justin mentioned, is to consider the possibility of removing those utility improvements from the project. At this particular time, you know, we don't have necessarily an urgent need that we'd have to do this. We don't have somebody that's looking to develop on the east side of CASA 21. The existing property owners already have water and sewer for their own businesses that they have there. So nobody has actually contacted us about, yes, we need this, we need these services at this point in time. In fact, I've spoken with one and he's not in favor of the project simply because of the cost of the assessments that would be intact on to their property. And at this point in time, they're fine with what they have as far as the services. So they're all private, but they're basically okay with that. As Justin said, it's good to plan for the future though, for those casings going across the highway. Ultimately, we're hoping for growth across 21, so we would want to plan accordingly. We don't want to rip up a brand-new roadway, even if it is 10 years or whatever it might be down the road. So the plan for that would be sound planning on our part. So I'm putting this out there for your consideration that, you know, I've talked to Ty about it as well and he concurs that we wouldn't necessarily have to do utility improvements at this time. Mainly because there isn't an urgent need, there isn't a demand for them. So it would be a project savings at this point in time. And taking into consideration other products that we have on the horizon, that might be something to consider then. So with that, I'll open up to any questions too.
I agree with it. Like you said, we don't have much for development. I mean, we don't even have that annexed in on the east side of the County Road. I think that casing would probably be a good idea. However, like up on the north side, I still think we should cross Lincoln with the water line either way.
I agree. I think that's one piece you wouldn't want to delete.
Because that's annexed as well as it's just literally crossing the street.
Yep. It'd be a great opportunity to do that while the road's torn up. So that would be a good one to keep. So namely, it would be just the utilities on Niklet that we would delete.
And then we wouldn't have to mess with Niklet. Basically Niklet would stay the way it is, wouldn't be touched. Minus like the little, you know, 30 feet at the end or whatever.
That's correct, yes. It would be just the end where we're connecting into the county road. Otherwise, the rest of it, we would just leave as is. We wouldn't... There wouldn't be any of the cost to replace the gravel and repair the roadway, if you will. So it just, Steve had asked me to prepare at least a rough estimate of what it would reduce the cost to the city or what the new city's share would be. So as presented here just a couple minutes ago, the city's share was 1,092,000 estimate. It would reduce that down to a share of about 250,000 ballpark. So it would take about 750,000 off of the cost project.
I agree with you. Yeah, I think that's a good plan to plan for the future, but hold back with all of those improvements.
As far as next steps, in anticipation of this, a resolution was prepared outlining the revised total project cost, reducing the utilities. So instead of 4.3 million, it reduces it down to about 3.5 million is the total estimated cost, which is in the resolution. The other step that we would need to take is to amend the feasibility report. And that's something that we can do after tonight. We can still move ahead with the public hearing. At the public hearing, we'll present a version of the PowerPoint that deletes the assessments for the utilities and deletes those costs. And as far as the revised or amended report, I would just submit that to Steve here in the next couple of weeks. Steve, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add about the revised resolution.
Yeah, we placed it on your table. We distributed it at the beginning of the meeting here. So there was only two changes to it. As Justin already mentioned, the total product cost down on item number one towards the bottom. And then going up to the first, excuse me, second whereas, the feasibility report, the words "as amended" were added to that paragraph. Those would be the only two changes.
Well, if everyone agrees, we're looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2025-24, resolution receiving feasibility report as amended and calling for a hearing on improvement.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Rose, seconded by Eager. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 378, amending the City of Gaylord zoning code. This is the second reading. So we're going to need a motion to adopt ordinance number 378.
So moved.
Motion from Groko. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eager. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Next, we need a motion to approve the summary of ordinance 378 and its publication.
So moved.
We have a motion from Eager.
Second.
Seconded by Rose. Any discussion or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to new business, 11A. We have the Pond Meadows addition purchase offer. So I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thank you. Kat and Peter Miller of, representing Miller Homes, are here present this evening. They submitted a proposal to purchase the remaining six lots that are located on the west side of Third Street. Included in your packet, the sheet that represents our, reflects our asking prices that we've had. We've had these for a long time, but that gives you that information. And you can compare that up to what they're proposing then on the following page in your packet. But basically, they're proposing to construct patio homes with two or three stall garages. They've attached a couple of their floor plans and some pictures of some houses that they've built. If you had an opportunity to go on their website, they have similar information out there on that too. They've actually worked or constructed in several different cities around here in southwestern or southeastern Minnesota here, actually as close as Arlington. So tonight, you have a couple of options here. Let me back up just a second. One of the things, you know, in addition to the sale prices that they're offering for the purchase of those six lots, part of that is also to ask that the city would waive our sack and whack fees for the purchase of those. As you may know or recall, we charge $1,000 for each water and sewer, so $2,000 a lot. We generally collect that with the building permit. That's how we do that. It gets applied to our water and sewer funds. So they do have a couple variations as far as, you know, the patio... They're looking at patio homes again, and they have a couple. One was with a sunroom, so the dimensions, 1,500 square feet on up to 1,664. And then they have their valuations as far as their pricing goes, anywhere from approximately 300,000 to about 345,000, depending on the style of home. Tonight, you can either accept their proposal as is. You can deviate from that. You even have the option, being this is a land purchase, to go into a closed meeting later on in the agenda. So you have some options here available. With that, we can invite them up and let them introduce themselves and...
Come on up to the podium.
You go ahead.
Okay, since Steve had a great introduction for us. I'm Kat Miller. This is Peter Miller and owner of Miller Homes. And just a little bit about us, we've been building since about 2013. And we've been averaging about 35 to 50 homes a year. We're mainly southern Minnesota. So yes, Arlington, but going to Medelia, Ellendale, Owentana, and anywhere in between. So if you have any questions?
So for a no?
Yeah.
Baby, could you kind of explain a little bit about the patio home, what that entails a little bit?
Yeah, so basically, it's, it's a slab on grade house, so there's no basement. And I mean, they're three bed, two bath. They're nice, three car garages mostly, is what we do. 1,500 square feet, some of them are up to 1,660. But yeah, it's a one, one level living. They, they work great. We mostly build them in smaller towns like this, and they work really well. They're, they're affordable, but they're, but they're nice homes.
Do you build them as spec homes, or do you build them...
Yes. So we do both, we can do both. But typically, we start as a spec home, and then, you know, if it, somebody looks at it and they want to make changes, you know, if we have another lot available, then we can tell them, you know, this one's too far for that, but we can definitely change it for the next ones if they want.
There is some, like, semi-customizations people can do to the spec home, too. If they want to pick certain colors out and, you know, add a finished garage or things like that. So it all depends where a buyer fits in as we're building, if they want to make changes.
Do you do, like, allowances, you know, for lighting or for covering?
Yep, we do, we do have lighting allowance. And then typically, what I would do is I'd meet with buyers at our office, ideally in Montgomery, otherwise we can arrange somewhere else. But I have a bunch of samples that they can view, you know, granite for the kitchen, quartz in the bathroom, siding colors is a bunch of different options, flooring, we have a bunch of options, so.
The driveways you put in, are they generally concrete or...
Mm-hmm, concrete.
Yes, concrete, yep.
I think it is an exciting proposal. I know other towns have little communities with the slab on grade homes, and there's definitely a market for them. So, yeah, I'm, thank you for your interest in our community. Go ahead.
So you're, I assume you're planning a single family for all these lots, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the only reason I ask, so Lot 8, it'd be that farthest south one, towards like the EMS building?
Oh, yep.
It's on that south side of that twin home? Just for aesthetics, I mean, would you maybe put a twin home there, or?
We definitely can.
Only due to like aesthetics of the neighborhood. That way it goes like twin home, twin home, and then it's all a single family after that, rather than a random twin home kind of in the middle.
Yeah, I had thought about the same thing. Our plan would be to start on the north and work towards the south. And then we could gauge interest off that, too, or we could, we could list a to-be-built townhome and just see how, see what kind of interest we get.
Yeah. And that one's wider anyways, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we also do, we do twin homes also in other place. They don't sell as good, but, I mean, there's a need, there's a need for them. Or if you guys think there's a need for them, there probably is.
Yeah. I mostly ask just for the aesthetic of the neighborhood. It kind of makes it look like it flows a little bit. I'm sure you've driven out there, I'm assuming by now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll be, I'm sure you kind of know what I'm saying on the south side, but...
For sure.
I think there's definitely a need. It's a lot of what we've been hearing that people are looking for and asking for. So, yeah, I'm excited as well that you're here.
How does the council feel about the offer?
Could we waive the water and sewer fees for anything you built next year? And then basically, anything that doesn't get built next year, we'll leave them intact?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so like next year, if you decide to build all six, then we'll waive all six. But if you build three next year, we'll waive the first three and then two years from now?
Yeah.
Kind of an enticing point, hopefully build more.
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure. Yeah, I mean, that'd be, that wouldn't be an issue.
What are your guys' thoughts? Basically, only waive the first year, but what are your opinions?
So you're saying like 2026?
Yeah, 2026.
I'm open to suggestions. I think it's a reasonable offer, and I'm just excited to see those lots get sold.
I believe it's a reasonable offer as well, and we haven't had anyone come that is willing to purchase that many lots. And, you know, we've been waiting, so I'm certainly okay with it.
Okay.
Anyone like to make the motion to accept Miller Homes' proposal to acquire from the city of Gaylord? Lots 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 8, Block 1, Pond Meadows addition.
So moved.
Motion by Rose, do we have a second?
A seconded.
Seconded by Groco. Any further discussion, question, comments?
So that would be the SAC and WAC fees, then, as they proposed?
Correct.
Would they be waived 100%?
Yep.
Yes, my understanding. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Mark, did you want to chime in here as far as the process for closing and...
Sure. So I think the next stage would be put together a purchase agreement. And I can draft that. Kind of depends on what type of contingencies you guys are looking for and the due diligence you feel like you need to do. But I guess the first draft can include kind of what the city is looking for, and you guys can add, I guess, whatever moving parts you guys feel you need. And then, do you have a title company you'd like to work with?
Yes.
We do, yes.
Okay. I can just leave that part of it open, or you can give it to me now, I can include it?
Do you know what it's called?
It's Act Title out of New Prague.
All right, so I think Steve has your contact information. He can give it to me, and we'll work on next couple of days here, getting you a purchase agreement that reflects this and kind of in the city's standard form, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, welcome to Gaylord.
Thank you, guys.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Gaylord Sanitation Contract. And I see Jess has joined us tonight. Time to renew our contract with Gaylord Sanitation.
So, yes, as you mentioned, Jesse is here this evening. Come on up, Jesse. He has submitted a proposal. Our, our current contract with Gaylord Sanitation expires at the end of this year on 12/31. It was a three-year contract, and he has submitted a letter here in your packet on page 144. And he's proposing to increase the residential rates by $1. So that would be for the different tiers or the different, you know, we have three different gallon containers, so each one of those would see a dollar increase. Talking with Jesse, he's, he's not proposing an increase in recycling rates. And I believe your, your fuel surcharge then would stay the same, too, is it...
It would be the same schedule as what we've had, yeah.
Okay. So this would be the only change then in the contract?
Correct, yep.
Looking to renew it for another three years?
Yeah, another three years would be good, yeah. We're pretty easy, Steve, come on.
Now, you're pretty easy to work with, so. Okay, any questions for Jess or Steve?
So the options would be, you can either go ahead and approve the proposal tonight, or we could bring back the contract, and you can approve it then if your consensus is to do, to move ahead. So you could do either or.
I would say let's, let's move it forward and look for a motion to accept their Gaylord Sanitation's rate increase proposal and to renew their refuse service contract for three years commencing 1/1/26.
So moved.
Motion from Eker, do we have...
Seconded.
Seconded by Groco. Any questions, comments?
Just to share, then from a billing standpoint, the first month that that would be recognized then would be in February. So it's for, you're always getting the usage from the previous month is what you build for.
Got it. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say, Millers, you're welcome to stay, but you certainly can go to if you want to leave. We won't hold you captive. Unless you're, unless you're interested in our financial plan, then you're welcome to stay.
Thanks, Jess.
Okay, next under 11C, we have the draft of the 2025 through 2030 financial plan. And Abdo is here tonight, so thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Annette Storm and Ashley Jurgensen with Abdo Financial Solutions. Let's see, does everyone have the, the plan right up in front of them? I mean, we can put it on the screen, it's just going to be really small. I don't know how beneficial it'll be.
Yeah, it's in our packet.
Okay. I'll just walk you through it, if that's okay. We'll just skip the computer. All right, okay. So on the five-year long-term plan, I'm going to go ahead and start on page seven, which is the introduction there. So what the long-term plan is, is it's going to give you a big-picture view of the status now through the year 2030 for the city. There's a bunch of schedules in it, including the tax levy, cash balances, planned capital and debt for the city over the next five years. So the first page talks about some of those assumptions that we'll go into a little bit more detail here. But I'm going to keep it very high-level. There's a lot of information in here. So I'm going to start on page 18. We're going to kind of go to the end and then circle back. I like to go through the capital, the capital funds. So starting on page 18, you'll see that this is the Special Police Fund. So as you can see at the top section there, it has all of the planned capital that is going to be replaced. The only items you'll see on page 18 and 19 are just the next five years. So there may be things that are further out that are not reflected in the actual numbers here. But as you can see, it's pretty comparable to last year with a new squad car in 2026. So the second part of page 18, you can see it has the revenues, the expenditures. So overall, this Special Police Fund is very healthy and able to cash flow the next five years for the planned replacement for anything related to the police. So moving into the next fund on page 20 is the Ambulance Fund. As you can see, it has the same format. We have the capital items up top with a replacement of a rig chassis here in 2027, and then a full replacement in 2032. So very consistent with the prior fund that we just talked about, how the revenues and then the future capital outlay. The fund is very healthy and able to cash flow without any additional revenues or any planning for this fund as well. Moving on to page 22, this is the CASA 21 reroute project. As you can see, we have the, not only the CASA reroute project, but then there's also the Public Works Building in there estimated for a total of 1.4 million there, along with the CASA reroute project of 390,000, for just under the 1.8 million for this particular fund. This is a new fund, so there is no projected revenues as of right now. In order to finance this particular project, bonding will be needed for that. I think I lost my note there, which is projected at, I believe, 15 years with a 3% interest. So that is reflected on, oh, page 24. I just needed to go to the next page. We'll show the actual debt piece of that. So starting in 2026, there is a proposed levy of 50,000 to help pay for interest upfront on that, that debt issuance that will occur in 2027. Maybe I may hear us wrong. Yes.
Actually, that's the project we were talking about earlier, so we'll be adjusting those numbers accordingly.
Correct, correct. Tonight, we're going over the draft, and then between now and, and year end, we'll be tweaking the numbers as more information comes to light. So, yes, we will be adjusting that. All right, so moving to the next project fund on page 26 is the Duval Housing Project. So this particular project is estimated to occur in 2027 at roughly 1.5 million with the developer. The funding, so this is on page 27, you'll be able to see it. It's, it's hard to flip back and forth there. But the revenues for this particular project, there is a Sibley County contribution of 130,000. The city is expected to have a million-dollar grant for that, along with the city match that will be used for property donation, property improvements, and future tax abatements there. All right, moving on to page 28. So this is the Capital Improvement Fund 801, which is the main capital fund for the city. As you can see, there, there is a lot of future replacements for all of the various equipment. Estimated for 2026 is just the Bobcat snowblower of 6,000. Moving to page 30 is where we'll see the revenues and expenditures for this particular fund. And as, as been in the past and in the future, there is a, a property tax levy associated with this particular fund to help cash flow. Any future projects there? Let's see, on page 30, just want to draw your attention to the 20, year 2028. There is a, sorry, I lost my page here. There is a $1.1 million purchase for a new fire truck that will be funded partially by the, the townships, a 45% reimbursement from the townships, along with a transfer from the Special Fire Fund of 250,000. And then the remaining will be used with bonding for the remainder of that. Roughly 500,000 is currently expected for that. So for that particular debt, we have that projected out for 15 years. And since it is a few years out, we did increase from the normal 3% to 4% interest, just as we're, we're not sure that far out for expected interest. And the reason that we are bonding is to maintain the fund's long-term health as half a million dollars would, would take out quite a bit for this particular fund and potentially could take away from other planned capital need. All right, moving on to page 32, this is the Water Utility Fund. So now that we're in the enterprise funds, the format looks a little bit different compared to the governmental funds that we had just reviewed. So the top section remains the same, where we have all of the expected capital projects and equipment there. As you can see, the CASA 21 reroute project does have some utility work in there. Currently, there is no debt to be issued for any of, of the water or sewer funds as there is adequate cash flow. Moving down a little ways onto the, the page there, we have the cash flow from operating activities. So you can see the first line is receipts from customers and users. For the water fund, we are looking at a 3% increase each year for rates that are being projected there. And then the payments to suppliers and employers is increasing at a 4% inflationary rate. Moving down to the bottom there, I just want to draw some attention as there is a target cash, a target cash reserve that we, we have for the water, sewer, and storm fund that is next year's debt service payments plus 50% of your operating expenses. So if we look at that bottom number on page 32, underneath the 2026 column, at the very bottom, it shows your minimum target cash balance of 421,000. And you can see just the, the row above that is just over a million dollars, and cash is expected at the end of 2026. So this fund is very healthy, and you're maintaining that minimum target cash. And if you follow that into the next page and to third, and onto page 33, you can see that the projected minimum ta, minimum balance that you want in that fund is roughly 487,000 in the fund at the end of 2030, is still projected just over a million dollars. Okay, also in, on page 33 there, we have a $1.6 million water plant upgrade that is needing to be bonded for, and that is the, currently being projected at the 15 years and the 4% interest. Moving on to page 34, we have the Sewer Utility Fund 602. So very similar to the prior fund that we just looked at for format-wise. We have the CASA project for next year. Once again, no, no debt being issued as the fund can cash flow that. Moving down into the cash flows from operating activities, we're predict, we are projecting out a 5% increase in rates for the sewer fund over the next five years. And then also, once again, the 4% for any of the supplier and employers, payments to suppliers and employer, employees at that 4%. As you can also see, in the middle of page 34, there is a transfer out of roughly 156,000. The majority of this is planned to go to the Stormwater Fund to help fund their portion for the CASA road improvement as that fund isn't as healthy as the sewer and water fund. So once again, looking down at the very bottom, you can see the minimum target cash on page 34 is 212,000, and the actual cash projected for next year is just over that 400,000 there. So just going all the way over into page 35, the bottom right corner... So just going all the way over into page 35, the bottom right corner of there, you can see that the projected cash balance is 716,000 and the minimum target is 218. So once again, this, this fund is very healthy. All right, moving on to page 36, we have the Stormwater Fund, the CASA reroute project, you can see in 2026 for the 111,000. That is being financed with the transfer out of the Sewer Fund. As of right now, the increase in the rates that are being projected here is just the five, 5.5% each year for the next five years. And then drawing your attention down at the bottom, you can see the minimum target cash for this Stormwater Fund is 217,000. And you can see the projected cash balance, even with the transfer from the Sewer Fund, is 175. So we are below that threshold there. And then if you follow even further over into page 37, in 2027, there is the, the dam project there for the 1.2, 1.25 million, which half a million dollars is being allocated with state funds for that project. And then the remainder is planned to be bonded over the 15 years at 4% interest. So even with the bonding there to help cash flow, as you can see at the bottom right corner, the cash, the cash in this fund does go negative, which is one of those areas that will need attention. Not just below the target balance, but negative. So we have been working with the administrator as to monitoring it, coming up with cash flow ideas in order to, to really help out this fund here. All right, and then the last fund that we'll look at is the Refuse Fund 603 on page 38. As of right now, there is no capital need for that particular fund. The rates are expected to increase, or like the revenue is projected to increase 3% each year over the next five years. And then same with the 4% for those payments to suppliers and employees. If you look on page 39, at that bottom right corner, you can see that the, the fund is very, the fund is very healthy with the target balance of 33,000 and the projected cash balance of 298,000. Any questions on specific fund things before I start to look higher level at some of the other pages? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and we'll go to page 12, which is the cash balance summary. So of all the projections and everything that we have for all the funds, including the ones that were not presented in here for capital. Sorry, it just takes me a minute to get my, my page here. All right, so on this, on page 12, for the schedule of annual cash fund balances. So the first item on there is the General Fund. As you can see, it remains fairly consistent. The only time that we are projecting increases in the cash fund for the General Fund is to maintain that 40% reserve policy. So the cash that is being projected here is, over the next five years, is planned to have that 40% reserve policy. The next section is all of the special revenue funds there. Everything remains fairly consistent until the transfer for the 250,000 for the fire truck out of the, the Special Fire Fund 225 there is the only real reason for the decrease when looking at the five-year total for all of the special revenue on the cash fund balances there. The next section is the Debt Service there. It'll show you all of the, the cash balances for each of the debt service funds that are established by the city. We do monitor this each year in order to keep the levy down. So if there is sufficient cash funds, we do adjust the, the need for next year's debt levy during your, your annual budget cycle. The next section there are the Capital Projects. That'll encompass everything that we had just previously spoken to and then followed by the Business Enterprise Fund. And as you can see there, that second, second or third last row where it shows the Stormwater, you can see the trend just as a snapshot there that it goes negative in 2028 there. Flipping to the next page, which is one of the most useful pages, I think, especially as you're going through your budget cycle. We have the projected property tax levies and your tax rates. So I'm just going to focus on that top section as I, I believe that's just the most important there. So the first row there shows the General Fund levy requirement based on the projections and assumptions that we previously talked about. Remains fairly consistent and just has the overall cost of living and inflation built into those levies. The Capital Improvements, the 801 Fund, as you can see, we are slowly trying to build that from 120,000, you know, in 2026 to 126 in 2027. I believe this is one of those areas that, that the administrator does, does monitor to see where he's at for the overall levy increase and makes adjustments there. And then the Property Tax for the Debt Service is that section that has the handful. Those are projected out based on the need of those funds. As you can see, there are a couple new levies for the 2026A and the 2028A bond there. So with everything pulled together with all of the new debt issuances, as you can see, the middle of the page, there's the city net levy and then followed by the percentage increases over the next five years. So you can see from 2026 to 2027, we currently have a projected 11%, which is on the higher side. So we'll, we'll work on getting that down a little bit as we, as we tweak our numbers between now and year end to try and help get that to be a more realistic number. And then you can see over the next three years after that, roughly a 6.4%, a 7.10 and then just under the 5% for those projected levy increases. All right, so the next page is just the, the outstanding debt schedule. So that'll show all of the current debt broken out by whether it's the government or the business type. And it also adds in the new debt. So just high level looking at the very, one of the last lines where it shows total of all funds. You can see in 2025, there's just over $17 million in outstanding bonds. And if you flip the page to page 15, in the end of 2030, we're projecting that to decrease roughly 3.5 million, even with the new debt issuances with the pre, the older debt falling off, just over the 13.5 million. All right, that concludes my high-level, very quickly run-through for the five-year plan. I don't know if there's any questions or anything for me?
It's a lot of information. And if you're not accustomed to looking at this, it's, it's a lot to take in. I, I'll share, I do utilize this, this plan quite a bit regularly. It's very good information for me from a financial standpoint. It really helps me out when we're looking out especially as far as projects on the horizon, how are we going to be able to finance them? Looking at our funds as far as what are, you know, how healthy are they? You know, from your standpoint, you know, it's, it's, it's good to look at those bottom lines too. Even when we're looking at projecting, you know, our debt service obligations in the future as well as capital purchases. You know, it's, it's important to, I think, focus on those. The levy, you know, these are projections as far as what we're looking at, you know, potentially in the future. Certainly, there's factors that could come into play that are not known yet at this point in time. So those are always subject to change, of course. The levy right now that's being reflected here for 2026 is based on the preliminary. We will be coming down from that number. At our next council meeting, I'll actually put that on the agenda for you guys to talk a little bit about where you would like to be in the set, you know, for next year. So anyway, it's, it's a great report. There are some graphs in the back that are helpful sometimes to look at those too. But I'm really pleased with Abdo as far as with their performance on this report. We do work pretty closely in going over it and stuff too. And I do, just to share, I do get the department's heads involved when we're talking about the capital replacement specifically. Those schedules for our equipment. So they're, they're much, very much involved when we're updating that on an annual basis. And also when we're looking at the budget, we talk about them too. So tonight is just, this is the draft. We'll bring back the, the final version on December 3rd, which would be considered for adoption after you would approve the budget for next year and the tax levy. Because those are reflected, they will be reflected in here.
Any questions?
Look pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you. It always, it's always a pleasure to work with you guys, so I appreciate it.
Next thing on our agenda, 11D, to schedule a work session regarding cap, capital, capital projects priority.
This is actually a, Leighton asked for this work session meeting. And I do agree, I, you know, we do have quite a bit going on and we have some potential projects that we've been talking about, like the, developing a new, you know, expanding the EMS building for a new senior center, Oak Tree Park restrooms. We have the dam project potentially coming up as well. We have the CASA 21 and the Public Works Building. So we, we have quite a bit of stuff here in, just in the near future. And then looking out is, you know, we also have a capital projects plan for some of our street projects. And so in light of all that and in our financial situation and what we can afford to do and, you know, how much we can raise taxes, how much can we use of our own funds that we have existing right now to support some of these products? Spend them down before we bond and levy. So it might be helpful just to have a discussion about this as far as what our priorities are. From a staff standpoint, that would be very helpful to know, you know, what, what do you want us to focus on? Where are you at? What do you want to focus on in the next three to five years potentially? Or at least in the next two to three years? So propose is just to have a, a work session meeting. And this is not necessarily to say that we might come to a conclusion as far as where we want to be at, at this one session. Maybe it might take more than one. I picked December 3rd because at this point in time, everybody's going to be there. The next meeting, I know Tony's going to be absent.
What about the first meeting in January? Our only meeting in January.
Yeah, the December meeting could get kind of long. I mean, I mean, if, if it was urgent, I would say, sure, let's do it. But I'm wondering if, usually the January meeting is pretty, can we move it to?
I mean, at this point in time, we haven't done anything more with the senior center then as far as looking at the EMS building. We just put that on hold for right now. Like to have this discussion, see where you guys are at.
I agree, I think the discussion is very much needed.
Trying to get on the same page, basically amongst ourselves.
And just have a plan, you know, even if it's not.
Millions of dollars.
Set in stone, but as long as we have a plan and move forward. And, and also it helps too, you know, all the time, like I just emailed Steve the other day, like I get a summary of grants coming up. You know, if we know we have a project coming up, we might be able to like tap into some grant funding too, which would be really helpful. And Region 9 actually has a grant coordinator and I, I should, I will email him after this meeting about any senior center appropriate grants, but. I don't know, any people's preference, December, January? I think it's important either way.
I'd say wait till January.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Sure.
It's more like our goal setting.
It is.
That one was pretty short last year. It normally is.
It normally is really, it's kind of like just laying out the year. And so I would, it would tie in.
Yeah, the December 3rd will definitely be a full night even without this.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
January 7th would be enough, or excuse me, January 5th, it's a Monday.
Yep, there's me the first Monday in January.
Monday. Could we do 5:30?
Fine with me. Okay.
Can we do a motion for that?
Sure, we need a motion to schedule a work session for capital project priorities for 5:30 PM on Monday, January 5th, 2026. Okay, motion by Groco, seconded by Eaker. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, any other, anything else? Any closing comments?
This probably be more of an EDA thing, but just for next year, maybe part of that project is finding more single-family lots. Just being that we just sold, I think, all of them. So just put it on there.
Well, and one thing, you know, we did, we have that land owned by American Lutheran Church and that didn't pass at that time, but we also didn't have a developer. And P&amp;Z said if we ever had a developer interested, they'd have, they'd revisit that. So maybe that's, that's an option.
I was kind of thinking that, I just think, I'm just throwing it out there, we should think about it for the next few weeks. Obviously, nobody will probably build nothing till spring at least. But I just don't want to have somebody else come in looking to build their own house and now we just sold the last six we had.
Yeah.
So just some food for thought.
Sounds good. Okay, you do not need our closing meet, uh, the closed meeting, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Eaker, second.
Second.
Seconded by Rose, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.